You think I can see that one?
No.
We got, we can share your way.
We're ready to roll.
All right, I call the order, the, uh, no, this is August fifteenth. You want July though, turn it over. Look at that. I'm gonna call the order, the July sixteenth meeting. Uh, roll call, please.
Yep, um. Haven't done this in a while, so, uh. ZBA member Haran.
Present.
Trustee Phillips.
Present.
ZBA member Crainer.
Yeah.
Um. Chair Shaheen.
Yes.
And Vice Chair Seelanders.
Here.
Okay, and then we don't have any alternatives right now.
All right, well then, the next item of business is approval agenda. Are you motion to approve it, or do you wanna make?
So moved.
Second. Who did support it? Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And just.
Yes.
For our notes, for the purpose of notes, and so, cause he doesn't know who everyone is, so it was, um, moved by Haran, and then who supported?
I did.
He did, and then, uh, seconded by Seelanders. Alright, sorry about that.
Alright, there's an opportunity here to disclose any conflict of interest for tonight's business. And then we'll move on. Uh, there's an opportunity for general public comment, seeing that no public is here. We will pass that up. Uh, we can approve the minutes from August fifteenth twenty-three, that's what we have that thing on.
Yeah.
Is your motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
That moved by Bill.
Seelanders. Bill Selander.
Supported by.
Yeah, because I wasn't here.
I can't either, I wasn't here.
Oh, it has to be you.
I'll support it.
Yeah, okay. Supported by Chair.
There is no old business to come before us. I don't know, we have to vote those minutes.
Yep.
I move, all in favor of the minutes as a president, please say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion carries. Old business, there is none. New business.
Well, abstain, yeah. Okay. Okay, new business.
Yes. Uh, why don't you introduce yourself? Once you do that, I'm gonna ask the staff to give us background on this, so, before we get into the discussion, because all you did was request a variance for fence.
That's correct.
And you want that variance, and that's why you're here. Our staff is, our staff has been working on this for some time with you, so why don't you brief us, uh, why, why we're here and what help we can be.
Okay, you guys wanna introduce, I guess?
That's turned on.
Yeah, it's on.
Uh, John and Andrea Barnard, fifty-seven seventeen Chestnut Street, um, which is on a dead end street in Uptown District. Um, we've resided there for over twenty years, and the family's owned this house for.
Nineteen hundreds.
Yeah, yeah, so, um, and we have fence around the rest of the periphery of the area. There's been some changes where the landlord up front removed all the, the road coming Chestnut, it used to be built right up and growing right up to the power lines. We had a little instance with the power line, so they come in and cut down that whole barrier to, from Main Street, where you can look right back into our house now. It used to be kinda secluded, and we're on the dead end. So, now that that, they removed all those trees and everything off from the south side of Chestnut Street, so that physical barrier, or natural barrier is gone. So, we're just looking to put another barrier up, and also, the tenants from the house on the, in the corner of Chestnut there have dogs, and have had some instances with their dogs, so. Just, some more privacy and a little bit of protection from their dogs too, so.
The reason you're not going with Greenery is because of the dogs, you want a barrier.
Correct.
Okay, um, yeah, so my view of the situation is basically, the ordinance and the opinion of the planning department doesn't clearly cover how we should view this property. Um, the problem for us lies in how the language for fence and consequent, um, conditions of how we should treat it are, is structured, so what it says is that the fence shall not obstruct, you know, vision, obviously, of the road and vehicular traffic, but also states that, um, the required setback of the street right-of-way shall be maintained, and that's kinda the language that is in question for us on the planning department's side because of how this parcel, uh, is orientated. So, let me show you on the map here what I'm talking about. Typically, the street right-of-way, depending on, you know, every street's a little bit different, but, you know, most side streets are measured thirty-three feet from center of road. So, something like that. Um, you know, there are certain streets in the township like Chandler Road, for example, that are sixty-six feet from center of road, uh, and that, and that makes up the right-of-way, right? The problem we have here is the street itself, the public street, dead ends into the property. Now, my understanding, after talking with the engineers from the Road Commission, is the street right-of-way actually ends here. So, when I look at the language, I don't know how to treat this front yard area anymore. It's still the front yard area, there's no question about that, you know, the, their driveway and address comes off of this point here. Their entryway into their property is here, that makes, you know, our view in the planning department at least, um, is that the front yard area is something like this, you know, and, and the D High Density Development District, the front yard setback is twenty-five feet. So, for them, if they wanna do a fence here, which is where you guys wanna do your fence, right, somewhere right about here, I mean, on their side, I'm not drawing over my other, cause anyone would be able to see the line, but a- along there. But when I go to section, what is it, fifteen point zero eight, and I look at the required setback from the street right-of-way. Well, if there is no street right-of-way, one could make the argument that there is no required setback, and what further complicates this situation for me is if this homeowner here was requesting a fence permit, and this has been dedicated their front lot, now this is a corner lot, right? So, we still have to treat, we still have to address that in our language, but there is carve-outs in the ordinance that says, uh, you know, they can determine what their front lot line is, and once that determination's been made, they can never adjust it again. Now, there's certain districts like the medium residential district where you can't do that, regardless of what's going on, you have, corner lots have to be measured both sides for, as the front right-of-way. That's not the case in that D High Density Development District. So, if these people here went for a fence permit along this line right here, we would treat that as their rear property line and their rear yard. And we wouldn't, their, the street right-of-way language for fencing wouldn't come into play, because the street right-of-way and the intent of the ordinance would go off of this property line, not this property line. And they're not obstructing traffic, this is their side yard, there's nobody's trying to pull in and out of this yard here. Now, here, obviously, that's not a different case. So, that's kinda where our department is at. The language doesn't clearly tell us how to address the situation. That's why we're here before you tonight, we need you guys to tell us how we should address the situation. And to that end, we haven't denied their permit, cause we don't know what to do here. So, usually when I'm coming to you for a variance, I've already denied the permit, I'm seeking a variance from a dimensional standard. I don't know what to do with this permit, that's, and lies the problem.
When was the house built?
Early nineteen hundreds, it was my great-grandmother's.
That's what I was.
Eighteen eighty-seven.
And it's, it's, doesn't have a two-hundred-foot frontage like the thing calls for either, I think the map was a hundred and seventy-seven feet, or something like that, so that.
It's an added lot, we actually destructed a house in, in that area here years ago, and took over the rest of the property and shifted the property line and was deeded the old sixty-foot of road right-of-way that was, used to go all the way out to the road, up to Webster Road, so, that's why, hence the square.
There is a house, there is a house here at some point.
Yeah.
Has it always been addressed as Chestnut? Or was it on Main?
It was on Webster Road at one time.
And you've addressed the issue of safety from the standpoint, the reason we generally regulate is Republic of Health and Safety. And so, it's because one of the prerequisites of dealing with the issue, but you don't see, you don't see a safety issue here, and you see a conflict between what somebody else's rights are, what his rights are, given the unique configuration of the property.
Yes, it's definitely a unique configuration of the property. I mean, in my opinion.
A fence on that south, or on that west side of the property already in the backyard of the other.
Where are we looking? A fence here?
Yeah, there's a fence there, or, well, that comes up, half of their driveway that's basically fenced in around the adjoining lot here.
This?
Yeah.
Okay.
We have a fence that goes through there, and then they joined to our fence and went south from there, so, basically, that other house is all fenced in too.
Okay.
I have a couple questions. Uh, wha- what's the, uh, position on the existing fencing?
This existing fencing? Well, that's an interesting thing, so, right now, this fence here.
Yes.
Is their rear yard.
Right.
So, I, in Bath Township, you can, in your rear and side yard, you can build a fence to lot line.
So, you don't see that as, as in violation of the ordinance?
Uh, no.
Okay. Um. How would the new fence be positioned relative to the existing fence? Is it parallel to it, or is it perpendicular? I didn't.
They were proposing something like this.
So, it's parallel to it?
Right.
Go back, yeah.
To the line.
It'll be shifted inboard to say, save the pine trees, and we're gonna be six feet.
So, it'll be something like that.
Yeah, right, we're in there. And probably taper off the last one to the end there.
That's, okay, that's how I envisioned it. Alright, next question is, if the ordinance provided for an exception where there's a dead-end street, would we even be here today?
No, cause then I would know how to address this.
Some need to have.
So, it's, it's the absence of that, of that exception language is, that's the pediment, okay. I had another question, but you just answered it, I, but my last question is, why is the applicant even requesting the right? Uh, it seems like it, it, it should be granted, but for the fact that there's not a provision in the ordinance that has this dead-end street exception.
Yeah, I just don't know what to do with this, and I don't have the ability to go outside of what the ordinance is.
Oh, and I appreciate that.
Yeah.
And I think, I think, well, we've got every parameter we need to use to give him advice. Cause you've got some pre-existing conditions here, you've got unique conditions here, you've got rights that are being denied him that others get, you know, if we go down our checklist. All we need to do is find consensus that this is unique enough to say, we think you should proceed.
It's, it's curious in the sense that we're not being asked to apply the four elements of a variance.
I'm still gonna read through the elements to help determine reasoning, but what I need more is an interpretation of the ordinance than I do a variance here.
That's, that's, that's what I thought as well.
And that's why I structured my staff report to reflect that. I'd still like to go through them, just to, cause I think they'll help us make the case for understanding why this determination was made. Do we wanna go through those?
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, what we have before is just for the applicant to understand what's going on, uh, in almost every community in the state of Michigan, within the ordinance, there's some kind of variance section. Within that section, there's, uh, usually some, uh, criteria, let's call it, that, um, helps the ZBA come to conclusions, uh, this is that criteria, so we have four, some communities have three, some have six, but largely, they all read very similarly. Okay, uh, that there is a particular difficulty which stands in the way of carrying out the strict letter of the zoning ordinance, and that there are special condition circumstances which exist that are particular to the land structure building involved, and which are not applicable to other land structures and buildings in the same district. So, what is the ZBA's thoughts?
No setback. No setback, dead-end road. Going back to nineteen hundreds, you've got a, you've got a pre-existing condition here.
Okay, um.
That's my, that's what's on the board.
I concur.
I concur with that.
Okay, um, that the literal interpretation of the provisions of the ordinance would deprive the applicant from the common, the rights commonly enjoyed by other properties in the same district under the terms of this ordinance.
Again, I think you hit it on the head, his neighbor can build that fence without permission, why can't he?
Yeah, um, any, any other thoughts? Okay.
Or she.
Um.
She's digging on the hole.
Um, that the special conditions and circumstances necessitate a variance did not resolve from the app, actions of the applicant. And again, I would just swap that word variance out with the interpretation of the ordinance, they didn't cause this.
You didn't cause that road to be dead-end, did you?
Uh.
When the road was abandoned.
We basically caused it to be dead, it's always been dead-end, but the road right-of-way was still graphed to be extended through.
Did this road, did this road ever go straight through your property to Webster?
Never, it's always been.
You didn't change that.
That's correct.
Okay.
We just eliminated the road right-of-way.
Okay, um. The granting of the interpretation would say, uh, requested did not confer the applicant any special privileges that is denied by this ordinance to other land structures, buildings in the same district.
But it being dead-end, I don't see that happening.
I don't either.
Yeah.
Yeah, either go ahead.
And this isn't written down, but furthermore, if you thought a similar situation came up where we experienced a dead-end road in the same district, similar property layout. You'd be comfortable giving them the same variance, or same interpretation?
I think what we're doing is giving you guidance of our reasoning, that's what you asked for. And the guidance of our reasoning is, there's a unique situation here that meets the criteria we would normally use for a variance, and we would advise you to consider that that way.
Do you think the Planning Commission should, um, make a recommendation that this provision be amended?
I think that's something me and Mark will probably take back when we do our, when I do the report from Planner following this meeting, I'll probably bring up that ZBA was held. Uh, one of the recommendations was that, you know, dead-end road should have an exemption. That way, we have guidance.
I agree with you that we should formally ask that.
You wanna.
I can do that, do you want Mark to do that as a liaison, uh, however you guys wanna approach that?
Well, I have two motions, and the first motion is that the ZBA requests the Planning Commission consider amending that provision in the ordinance to make an exception for, uh, a dead-end street.
Okay.
And the second motion would be that we grant them the right, or we instruct the planning department, I mean, I, I don't know how you wanna go about that, but.
Yeah.
We instruct the planning department to allow them to build their fence.
Okay. So, your interpretation of the ordinance is to, you're providing me guidance that I should approve this permit?
Yes.
Okay.
So, um, the first motion is their support.
Yes.
Their support, is there further discussion? Hearing that, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries, and the second motion, that we offer you the advice, uh, that you proceed with, uh, approving their request. Is there a second round of motion?
I'll second that.
It's been supported, is there further discussion? Hearing that, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion carries. Have fun.
Thanks.
Thanks for coming.
Thanks a lot.
Now the real work's done.
We'll, we'll get that permit to you guys this week. We'll email it to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time, dedicating your time.
Miles, would you feel comfortable giving us a little briefing on what's going on in the township?
Yeah.
If it's appropriate for us to hear?
Yeah, if that's okay with everyone, was on the agenda, but I'm fine with doing that. Um. No opposition, okay, um, so, yeah, there's just been a lot going on overall, I mean, the department's been busy, obviously, we have a new intern, I don't think any of you guys have probably seen besides Jack and Mark, um, Cade. He's a graduate student right now at MSU, we have an interview tomorrow for another, we usually now cycle through two interns, so we, we'll keep two on, and as their course loads change, that's helped us be flexible with their schedules, obviously, school's number one for them. That's helped the department build out capacity, um, we recently lost one of our interns, Lexi, uh, to Matt Windinley's firm. I don't know if you guys know Matt, uh, he's got a large engineering firm out of Detroit. He's also a Bath Township resident on a lot of our ad hoc committees, cause of his, you know, engineering background, um. So, that was sad to see, but she's off to bigger and better things, so, and that's what the whole program's about. Um, in terms of development, it's been crazy, um, we've had a lot of stuff go on, you know, in the last, you know, looking back like twelve months ago, eighteen, twelve months ago, you know, Taco Bell came online. The Flora, uh, four-unit shopping center where the marijuana, Dunkin' Donuts, and, um, hopefully, Barry's Bagels are taking forever, I don't know why they put their signage up so early, I don't know. And then, we had a surgical center come online there by Myers, they're now going through their estate process, which I'm sure the Hoopstick jumped through, and the licensing for something like that is probably crazy. But, uh, I know they're in there right now doing training, that Ace Hardware was obviously a big one. Um, in my opinion, they got, well, too many mowers in the back, we're trying to work with them on a plan to get that cleaned up, but, you know, we're working on it. Um. We got the Ides interested in doing some stuff in the Somerset Park area, um, so that got a holdup from the Road Commission for a while, but it's back on. Obviously, uh, the chair here talked about the factory, which, you know, is Norm Fastener, that was another pretty controversial one, I guess, in the township, but nonetheless, it got approved, and we're trying to work with the maximum on it. We got like ten different agreements that we've had to get figured out, we're down to like the last two, um, and it's just kinda slow rolling, like, we gotta get all these details hammered out, because just the money. All, you know, with any project, there's risk and there's stakes, but the risk and the stakes are so much higher this time, cause the dollar amounts are so much higher, you know, we're trying to upgrade our sewer system there. We got a grant from the state, the MEDC gave us a grant for our infrastructure for three point eight-six million dollars to help sweeten the pot, to have this come to Bath Township, so we're trying to work through all that. Um. And, you know, that'll benefit not only that development, but it'll build our REU capacity, and, uh, that's a residential equivalent units that we can have, um, for just how many things can tie into the system. One of the big things that's gonna hold back Bath Township as, you know, it continues to evolve over the years is infrastructure. And the cost of infrastructure is not going down, I mean, it's going up and at a rapid pace, and, um, so, you know, we're trying to look at all those things, we got another ten million dollars from the state, uh, for Chandler Road corridor, so we're starting up all the engineering and the design for that. Gonna involve, uh, the closing of some of the re, uh, not the closing, the enclosing of some of the Ringme, Chandler, Inter County drain. Uh, and then putting sewer out of the road and next to that, all in the same right-of-way space, so the road itself can be built out. Um, there's a big push from Inham County, Clayton County, East Lansing wants it, we need it, uh, it's just a big student corridor area, and I mean, you guys have been over, it's thousands of apartments, and so, if that area is gonna be able to have its capacity that it needs, you know, we have to, we have to size up some of our infrastructure. Um. And then there's a, you know, a dozen smaller projects, Mr. S. Truitt downtown, the gas station that we just looked at coming up to the board. Uh, I don't know if you've heard, uh, there's a gas station that we, the Planning Commission has been reviewing, um, right here on the Webster Road exit of sixty-nine, a BP set, uh, station. Yep, on Fu, off of Fu Court Lane, had to be done that way because of the M dot limited access easements won't allow for drives there, cause of the off-ramp of the highway, so it makes sense. But, uh, yeah, I mean, that's just a small, you know, with, there's some PUDs sprinkled in there, HDI PUD that we're looking at, you have forty-eight units. Mr. Kessler is, uh, making a nine-unit PUD, almost like a amendment to the landings, um. And this whole time, we just been, yeah, and private, and driving, this whole time, too, in the background, stuff that the Planning Commission doesn't see, is there's just single-family homes popping up everywhere, there's that custom build on Clark Road you guys might have seen, kind of a real interesting house. Uh, you know, tucked away in these little nooks and crannies of the township, farmers are dividing off lots, and homes are going up, and it's been crazy.
It's been good, you mentioned infrastructure a couple of times, I, I happened to be in a meeting the other day, and, um, Mayor Shore announced a five-hundred-and-fifty-three million dollar infrastructure grant from the feds for Lansing, and a billion and a half dollar new battery plant, uh, for the Lansing area. Though, a lot of that infrastructure money, we've been backing into, from what I understand you've been talking about, with the factory, we've been benefiting from it. But I don't know if we have our own strategy, and it takes us to look at more of that, uh, if it's available.
Yeah, and I feel really lucky, you know, too, though, that we have somebody like Ryan Siewan's Bliss on the board, you know, he knows a lot of those state players, I know he's been advocating for the township, and when they're doing these markup sessions, you know, he's like, don't forget about Bath, you know, we got a lot going on.
That makes a difference.
Yep, we've been working with MEDC and LEAP probably closer than we ever have, um, you know.
I'm glad you talked about that, I have a conflict of interest there, I worked with LEAP on the Sister Cities Commission, and the, the head of LEAP, uh, Keith Lambert is on my commission. And I, I was upset when Bath Township stopped funding a partnership with LEAP several years ago, but at the time, it looked to the township board like they were spending five thousand and getting nothing.
Fifteen thousand, Paul.
Fifteen thousand.
Okay, that's a little bit.
So, they, they decided it was a just thing to do, but subsequently, I think LEAP has proven that it has value to us, and it's helping us, how do you explain the tax base that we're gonna get out of this factory, if it wasn't for LEAP and the work they do? So, I find that interesting, I find them fascinating, w- we're working with Turkey, that's why you're, one of the reasons you're getting the, the factory? Turkey wants to move its fabrications in the US, the guy went to MSU, he loves his freedom, he loves Bath, that's why we're getting them a factory. They wanna move more factories here, we don't often get factories, it's, it's, there's a lot of hope behind that. But also, we signed a deal this week with China, with Sister City, with Oha, China, and they'll be expanding their capacity in food production to this general area because of the factory that LEAP helped put into St. John's, the Irish milk processing plant and the Wape factory, those things are bringing lots of business here. And I see LEAP as, as having proven its worth over time, so I, I say I have a conflict of interest, I'm biased, I, I see it from where I'm sitting. Township has a way to see it from wherever they're sitting, uh, but it's good stuff coming, and there's more coming with it.
You know why I'm smiling, don't you, Paul? Yeah, maybe because, um, I, two things, one, I agree that they've made some inroads in to try and do something. But it's the first year that I came on as supervisor here, that I moved to get rid of LEAP, because nothing had happened with them doing anything for us, and we were paying them basically to upstand and upstart everything in the city of Lansing, and I was tired of it. And I'd been to many of their meetings, but I will agree with you that they are, uh, trying to now focus on some outside areas such as Bath, and I'm happy about that, I'm happy to have them back.
It helped to have Daryl where Daryl was with his land, and Daryl's.
Undoubtedly.
Without Daryl, it wouldn't have happened, but I'm, I'm impressed because of the layer of planning and, and cooperation that has to occur between state, federal, uh, the township, the county, this going on has been significant. I mean, you guys should really be proud of what you pulled off with, with that factory. The co, the complexity of it is humongous.
Yeah, and we'll see if we can get it in the end zone, I don't wanna hype everything up, like, you know, and I try to set realistic expectations too with you guys, the public, who, you know, random people that come in the door and are talking to me about this, it is a complex thing, a lot of moving parts, I want this in the end zone more than anybody, trust me. But, um, you know, it's complex.
You know, there's negotiations, and as, as Jack says, sometimes you win, sometimes you lose.
I was, first of all, I was thrilled with, with the factory.
I was, first of all, I was thrilled with, with the factory going in and the development at the expressway, but I was concerned about two issues, one.
Okay.
Housing.
Yeah.
Because of that, and the other is, uh, the schools. Are we, I mean, assuming we have a lot more families coming in and moving into the, into the, uh, community, are the schools capable of handling a lot more kids?
Well, so two things, so one, all right, so housing, because those are two like very different topics, all right, so housing, I think we talked about the point, we are in a housing crisis. It's crazy, I know like my personal lived experience is me and my wife were shopping for a house after we moved here, got this job, got an apartment, lived there for like two years. Finally decided, hey, let's try to get a house, it's probably the right time now or never. And we got out baked all cash offers seven, eight times before we finally were able to find a couple that were willing to do an off-market sale with us. If they would have taken it to market, probably wouldn't have been even competitive. Um, it's, so, it's a crisis, the state realizes that, Governor Whitmer's done the first ever, you know, state housing plan. To her benefit at least, just to get the issue on the radar, I feel like it's something better than nothing, but.
The president mentioned in his speech in Detroit, is a, is this first hundred day thing, one of the, one of the objectives is rental costs and housing have got to be dealt with nationally. So you're, you're right on, you're right on target.
But some of, but I've talked to some of these state agencies and at some of these economic development conferences, a lot of the, the levies in our society that are controlling the housing crisis. We're doing everything I think we can do here locally, we're working with developers, we're even recruiting developers at this point, like, hey, check out this cool parcel, like. This is in our infrastructure district, we got sewer four hundred feet away, if you could get in touch with this landowner, we could all make some kind of deal here, so I mean, we're almost like. Putting this information out there.
Great.
Yeah, and, because you know, part of the job of being a planner is almost like a salesperson for the township, like, hey, look at our shiny township, why don't you love to be a part of it? Um, but the problem is, you've got Eagle, that's a roadblock, you've got MDOT, that's a roadblock. You've got the State of Michigan Building Code, which, you know, in nineteen seventies and nineteen eighties was five thousand pages, now it's, uh, twenty-five thousand pages. I mean, they just, the state just amended the building code for, um, single family residential in March to now require electronic, or disconnect switches. On every single family home, um, electrical box, that used to only be required of commercial. And those disconnect switches go for about three grand a pop. So you just increase, in the middle of a housing crisis where no one can afford a house. By making one line of text change, the state made the cost go up, just, that's three thousand dollars more.
For the builder and the purchaser.
Yeah, so the, and so then that cost gets transferred to the purchaser, we can't afford houses now. My generation can only afford houses that are fixer-uppers that were built in the nineteen seventies anyway, so what's, what are we doing here? So anyways, that's my housing thing, we're doing what we can, but there's got to be, uh, this is a big issue, it needs to be talked about at every level of government.
And education?
On the school front of things, the school actually came out in support of this, they can take the capacity, if anything, they need the capacity, they're desperate to get these students.
Good, good.
And the taxes that come with that factory will help them tremendously.
Yeah, and that was one point, you know, there's a abatement process that the board, uh, was able to pass to help incentivize them to move here. One factor of that abatement is that schools are exempt, so no matter what kind of tax benefits they get from us or the state, they've paid full taxes on school millages. Yeah, so, because the schools are in, all of that new, like we were saying earlier, all that new development helps has it.
Police and fire would, they have to pay full on that.
Yep, yep, school, police and fire.
You know, this is a good macro discussion, but I have a, a, a very micro.
Okay.
Question. Chestnut Street.
Okay.
As you go east on Chestnut Street from Webster. And it, where it dead ends.
Mm-hmm.
What is going on?
These guys' properties, or the property just right here?
There's a, there's a trailer, there's a mobile home-like trailer back in there and, I mean.
A camper?
A camper, what it, what, what's going on back?
Yeah, so.
They look like a junkyard.
So here's what I'll.
That was my impression when I drove up there.
Here's what I'll say about that, so. It's my understanding that prior to my time here in Bath Township, there was a code enforcement officer that was, uh, overzealous, I don't know the.
You're looking at me and I'll be happy to tell you that the way you're describing it is accurate. Um, it got to be very problematic, to the point where we didn't really want somebody going out day-to-day headhunting people.
Mm-hmm.
We wanted it to be more complaint-based.
Mm-hmm.
I think that's kind of the direction it's led in.
Yeah.
Is that accurate?
That's correct, and, but now I feel like, and, you know, and there, there's a couple of situations we're looking at in the township now. But in my personal playing opinion, and I'm a little bit biased, because I, you know, I got that military background, or I just love rules and order, I can, I can't help it. And so, and that's why I'm in planning now, and so I feel like the pendulum was over here with the overzealous. And then maybe the pendulum has swung too far, and I think, you know, I would, I would like to see it swing back into equilibrium. But if you're seeing something in the township, because we're complaint-based, and no one likes to, no one likes to be the one to complain on their neighbor, you got to put in a form about it. Because the township is not going to do anything if there's no complaint.
You drive down old M seventy-eight. And the number of illegal signs.
Oh, yes.
That are all on the road there are just.
They've reduced them.
Not many.
The one on that guy he's selling, he used to run his signs off to the highway every day, they finally got him to stop it.
When I know even on old someday, there was even a gentleman, and Cade knows, because he helped me write the letter for it, um, there was a gentleman that was trying to sell some stuff and put up a big banner. And that was like just a bridge too far for us, so we actually wrote a letter and got him to take his sign down. So there are certain things that are within the purview of planning, sheds, fences, signage, that we try to address, so if you're seeing a sign and we don't know about it, let me know about it, you know, you have to put in a form, I'll handle it. But, um, you know, stuff like trailers, vehicles, junk vehicles, blight, you need to put in a complaint to code enforcement.
Well, I don't want to put in a complaint, but when I initially.
But no one wants to put in a complaint.
When I initially looked at the site, I thought that the reason why they wanted to put the fence up was to, was to block the view of what's going on behind them.
Yeah.
Which would have been understandable, I, I mean, I, God help those folks that are living there, I don't want to create a problem for them, but, boy, it, it looks pretty bad.
Yeah, I have no, I have no sympathy for people because they're creating a problem.
Let me jump in here, because if nobody wants to file a complaint, maybe it's just somebody that you live with. I understand the township doesn't want to get into fight every time and start, you, you lose it no matter what you do with it, you, you get everybody upset, you get negative. If it's, if it's to the point where nobody's really willing to sign a complaint, then why not let it be?
Well, they said, so, part of the reason why they wanted to put up the fence were the dogs.
Yeah.
And I was thinking, well, maybe that's part of this whole, what's going on here, I mean, good fences and good neighbors, uh, so.
Yeah, I don't know, but yeah, there, you know, there, there's some blighted properties too in the township, one thing that me and Beth are working on internally right now is. The township hasn't had, it's my understanding, a, um, dangerous structure hearings officer since two thousand seventeen, two thousand sixteen, somewhere in there. Over that period of time since then, I mean, that, you gotta remember, two thousand sixteen, that's almost eight years ago now. So we've had several structures that have dilapidated over the time, because the township does have an aging population. That's on a fine night budget and it's hard to take care of these structures, um, we've tagged a couple of them. And we'd like to get them removed, but to legally go through that process, we need to have a dangerous structure hearing officer. We have to appoint said officer, so right now we're in the interview phase for people and we'll be soon, I'm hoping by the end of this month, bringing forth a candidate to the board to appoint. And then we're going to get these hearings rolling.
Let me, let me ask an out of the box question. If you know that we have a senior population with low income. Shouldn't it become a public priority to discuss what our options are with that rather than just enforcing zoning ordinances?
No, for sure, but this isn't even zoning ordinance, these are, this is State of Michigan Building Code, I mean, these structures are uns, they're not, we're not helping these seniors. By allowing them to stay in, if once it's.
In a dangerous place.
Yeah, I mean, these could, some of these buildings could collapse in on them and bury them.
Well, that was my concern.
Yeah.
Uh, that was, it looked.
Well, my point, I missed, I guess I didn't say clearly, is there any way we can help ameliorate the safety issue for people as part of our public policy discussion?
That would be wonderful.
I think, I think you might be able to, but you know, there's also a vast network of safety, there's a safety net out there for seniors. But they have to be willing to engage in the safety net too, so, uh, the responsibility does lie a little bit on them, and I, I mean, my wife's a social worker, all she does all day is engage people with services.
That may be part of what, the way we can, we don't have to come down with a hammer, we could come down with a soft pillow that pushes people in a certain direction. And informs them of certain opp- opportunities they might not otherwise get, it's a nudge instead of hitting them.
Yeah.
Yeah. There used to be a HUD program that did that, that, uh, because I, I had a neighbor. Who's had a friend who lived on Kalamazoo Street and the city of Lansing and HUD, uh, was paying for a new roof, the houses. And I gave them a bid to put a roof on this lady's house, I didn't want the job, I wasn't a roofer, so I bid it. I thought, I added a thousand bucks to the bid so I wouldn't get it, and the guy called me up.
Why did you do that?
And, and said, well, you won the, the bid, and I told him, I said, I added a thousand dollars to it because I didn't want to do it, I was doing my friend a favor. And I said, how do you, who are you, was my first question, I'm a social worker, no offense to your wife.
Awesome.
And I said, how did you learn to do the bids, and he said, well, we get three bids, we take the one in the middle. And I said, well, the guy above me really didn't want to do it, and the guy below me did it. And was, he was right, and so I did the job because I was going to make a thousand bucks on it, and it was a nightmare of. You know, hoops I had to jump through with a HUD permit, City of Lansing permit.
It's something to think he's talking about.
Another thing though, with the dangerous structures that we're seeing is, and I'm not trying to make this go on too long, but another thing we're seeing is, you know. It's not necessarily just, I don't want you to think like it's a s- a sad situation with an elder couple that can't take care of the property, sometimes it's just a speculator from out of town. That brought the property on a land sale or bankruptcy sale and they're out of Detroit or California or wherever. And they're, they have no incentive to do anything, if anything, they're hoping that the property drives down the price of the property adjacent, so they can scoop that one up too.
Oh, boy, yeah.
And it's a big problem.
Yeah, it's complex.
So, I have no, I, I don't have any sympathy for it, I guess, and maybe I'm being harsh, but I'm ready to get these dangerous structure hearings rolling and get some of these taken care of by court order. So, but yeah, so we've got a lot going on, sorry to end on like kind of a bad note, there's a lot of positive in there.
No, there are a lot of positives.
It's exciting.
Yeah.
All right.
I appreciate your discussion, we haven't done this in a long time, just had a chance to chat. Are there other things that people want to bring up while we're here? We don't have to be so formal.
The only thing I want to bring up is having come back on the board now and seen some transitions over the years. I will say that, um, we're all very happy we have Miles.
Yes, yes, well, I'd, I'd say from, from watching the stuff at arm's length, the township is doing good work. It's not just Miles.
No, it's not.
Generally, I see that there's more consensus and there's less conflict, apparently, there's always going to be conflict here, but there's things seem to be getting done and done rationally.
Yeah. Yeah, there's a good team here at the township for sure, I mean, even Ben Zeep, uh, we've been working with him on all this sidewalk project, we had a contractor who wasn't doing the best, you know, it's never. Nice to fire somebody, but we ended up having to terminate that contract and quickly worked with Dale Hosford, you know, another just great re- resident that, you know. He kind of swooped in and saved the day, we were allowed to do that through, you know, the, um, road commissions, uh, policies and, you know. Getting a good product at the end of the day, and I, I mean, that's all Ben, all credit to Ben on that project.
Are the, all the, is that the, the schools stuff?
No, that is the township's project, but it's in coordination with the Safe Streets and Schools, like wherever they stopped, we started.
I'm going to ask a dumb micro question because you made me think of it, the corner of Slate Road and Webster? Does anyone ever talk about that, straightening it out?
Oh, you know, the road commission does get that question every once in a while, yeah, right here, how it does that, it's so weird. I, that's gotta be because of railroad tracks, right, that went through there?
Yeah, that's why it happened.
Yeah.
But they're gone now.
Yeah, I'd love to see that, I mean, they got the right of way to do it already, it's a little bit of a low spot there.
I have a feeling it's going to have a low priority item, but.
Oh, yeah, a hundred percent.
Well, you got me, you opened the door to purchase stuff.
Yeah. Well, yeah.
It bothers me every time I turn there.
Yeah. I could see it happening eventually, if you get some kind of safety grant.
I've seen accidents in that corner.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's why I.
Yeah.
At my age, I can't turn my head as far as I used to.
No, not really, it's still under discussion for the South, but there's, they're on, on what I would call fact-finding mission.
Is there anything you want to add to this discussion?
I don't have anything to say right now, but, yeah.
All right.
All right. So I hear a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved and supported, all the papers walk.
I'd say C, I'd say C Landers.
Very good, nice to see everybody.
You too.
Crainer, second. All right, let's, don't.